I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, August 19th to order. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kate, just one agenda correction, which I didn't see. The second listing of the date should...
Yeah, Donna.
It's been corrected.
Donna told us this morning, we fixed it.
Okay. I have the old version then. Okay. Is there any public comment this evening? Any public comment? Okay, seeing none. My first selectmen's report today is very brief. I just want to acknowledge and thank all three of our volunteer fire departments and post 53 who are, as we speak, on scene at a structured fire in town. We had, as you know, we had a terrible storm earlier, several lightning strikes, and one of them hit a home. Fortunately, no one was home at the time, so everybody's safe, but kudos to our volunteers. They are doing an amazing job. Kate.
Mark, at the last meeting, you pointed out that I had said I wanted to talk about parking at some point, so I do hope at the next meeting to have some recommendations for changes for you all related to merchant parking. I have some ideas, and we're running them past public work staff right now to see what people who are on the ground are familiar with it, what they think, so hopefully we'll have those ready for one of the meetings in September.
So Kate, would this be for the permits that we issued to...
Not just permits for merchants, but also maybe perhaps changing some of the spaces where we have three hours, two hours, changing those to the different timeframes, maybe adding a little bit more permits, but also a little, some more one-hour basis.
Okay. And now we'll go back up, sorry about that, gentlemen, to our presentation on sustainability. We have Jeremy Ginsburg, Director of Planning and Zoning, and Craig Flaherty, Chairman of the Advisory Committee on Sustainability. Welcome.
Good evening, Craig Flaherty, the Director. I'm going to turn it over to Jeremy for his presentation. As you know, back in December, we asked for the name change to the Advisory Committee on Sustainability and a modification to our charge to include shepherding the town's involvement with an organization called Sustainable CT. One of the goals was to file an application to become recognized as a sustainable community, and that requires us to complete action items in at least nine different categories. We need points in each of nine different categories. We are coming up on the application deadline on August 30th, and although it was an aspirational goal, it looks like we're going to make it. We seem to have completed enough action items to score enough points to have us registered as a bronze-level sustainable community. We will find out when finally judged by the folks that review our application. One of the categories that we needed to complete action items in was category eight, healthy, efficient, and diverse housing. It was a little challenging for us to figure out where to score points in this category based on the criteria set out by Sustainable CT, but the one section that we saw that we could get some points required some work to look, design, and implement a housing needs assessment. So Jeremy Ginsburg was gracious enough to support our efforts on this action item, and he has put together that plan and report. One of the requirements of the application is that we make that presentation at a public meeting, so here we are. What's the date? Ten days before our application deadline, but we'll get there. Once we do complete and file our application, it is our intent to come back to you and kind of describe what we learned and, you know, where we applied for points, where we think we may be able to apply for points in the future, and, you know, some recommendations on what we think the goals for the town should be relative to taking part in the organization. But with that, I will turn it over to Jeremy to present some interesting information on housing data.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig, the committee's done an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Under limited time, they did, put together an exceptional presentation on water conservation last week, which was great.
With the support of a high schooler from Darien, I forget the last name. No, there have been a lot of volunteers that have come together to put a lot of time in and a lot of thoughtful effort on this application, and we'll make sure they get their thank yous as well.
Absolutely.
Good evening, everyone. Jeremy Ginsburg, Darien Planning and Zoning Director. And as Craig mentioned, to obtain certain points for the Sustainable CT application, we had to look at housing, and the group gave us some specific questions that needed to be answered, some data that needed to be reviewed. The main data that they put forth for us to review and analyze, which you all have in front of you, is a 2018 document from the Partnership for Strong Communities called the Housing Data Profile. And what's interesting, even though it's dated 2018, some of the information in there is from different sources, which is not necessarily 2018. Some of it's 2015, 2014, so it's now 2019, or three-quarters through the year, so certainly things have changed even since this document's been put forward. So we'll start, we'll walk through some of the information I put together. The first two questions were really about demographics, and we're all familiar with Darien, some of the demographics, but a couple of things to note, Darien in many ways is different than what's going on. Craig and I were discussing this, in the rest of the state. Darien is a growing, thriving community, and you can't say that about too many communities in the state. Darien's population is growing. It's thriving with lots of construction going on. There's new housing units coming online, and that's good news, and we'll talk a little bit about the grand list as we go forward. One of the, one of the things that Jamie and I were talking about earlier today, which is on the top of page two, which I found very interesting, Darien's population density, how many people per dwelling unit, is surprisingly, right at when you consider this, in the West Cock region, you have Danbury, Stanford, Norwalk, which clearly they're major cities in the state. Darien's not like those. But when you look at the other communities, Darien has the highest population density. So we have to say, why is that? Well, a number of reasons. One is, Darien for a long time has had public water and sewer, which allows people to live closer together because you don't need room for your septic system. For many, many years, Darien has had, I'll call it, higher-density zoning, fifth-acre zone, third-acre zone. If you think of, some other communities might not have that, I'll call it relatively high density, but also Darien's dwelling units generally are larger. Three-bedroom, four-bedroom, you don't see too many three-bedroom actually for single-family homes, four, five, five-plus-bedroom houses which are being constructed, and generally the schools are very good, so people with, there's big houses available, people move into the houses with children, and it all interrelates that we see more children in Darien, thus a younger population, and more people per dwelling unit. So it kind of interrelates the schools, the nature of the zoning, the houses that are being built, and the fact that we're seeing new construction with new homes, all lends themselves to that. Now again, and we'll talk a little bit about this in the questions we see next, the nature of Darien is slowly, slowly changing and has changed. It was only in 1985-ish that the first condominiums came to town, Village of Pond, Darien Close, Sedgwick Village. What was very controversial at the time is now, those condominiums have been very successful in allowing people who often would buy a larger home to downsize and stay in town. And of course, since that time, in the late 90s, Avalon, 189 apartment units, Kenset is working on 70-plus large condominiums, so we've seen a lot of different housing diversity coming through town in the past 30-plus years. But let's talk a little bit more on question two, which is, is Darien getting younger or older? What's the population going to do over the next 10, 20, 30 years? The Partnership for Strong Communities notes that most, most communities in Connecticut are losing population, the state as a whole is losing population, but, so what they did in their projection, which was done five years ago, they've projected Darien to lose young population, and the 65-plus population is projected to increase by 11%. In my response, I did not necessarily agree with their projection of, I'll call it, school-age children. We here in Darien are much more aware of what's gotten approved, what construction is underway, the fact that our housing base has a lot of large units. There's a lot of units that are going to come online over the next three years, 200, almost 300 apartments in the next three years. So it's likely we're going to see some, what they project is a big decline in schoolchildren. I do not agree. I think it's going to hold steady or slightly increase. Jamie and I mentioned that the school enrollment figures come out October every year, so once the kids get settled in school in September, the Board of Ed comes out with their enrollment numbers, and we'll be able to look at that for a much more up-to-date look at where the schools are and what they project. We did talk a little bit in the, in the document about the different types of housing that have been built in recent years, garden homes, very, very small units, about 400 square feet, studios and one-bedrooms. The heights at Darien turned from 53 single-family units to over 100, I'll call it apartment-style units. The residences at Selix Woods on Parkland Drive, newly constructed, over 100 units of assisted living, memory care. Again, there's much more choice for people than there used to be, and that we have these three new developments coming in, Nuroton Heights Shopping Center, Federal Realty Project, which is called the Commons at Nuroton Heights, and the Corbin District Downtown. All of them are likely to get started within 90 days with some demolition, so in October, 10, six, eight weeks away, you're going to start seeing buildings coming down. We'll keep you informed on that as it gets a little closer. Question three was relative to the grand list. Of course, sustainability, the way taxation works is if your grand list is not increasing or it's decreasing, you've got some troubles on the local level trying to make ends meet. Darien is one of the few communities, one of only 17, to show an increase in the grand list since 2008. So Darien's grand list during that time has increased 29%. Now, tells you something about the other 150-plus communities, that they're not as strong as Darien is, and as you can see, the construction continues on. Question four was relative to the town zoning and housing choice creation. We talked, we just talked a little bit about that, different types of housing being built, condominiums, apartments, small apartments, and there's been a number of different zoning changes made over the past couple of years to really allow for this different types of construction. You'll see a lot more, as I said, mixed-use construction. We've seen it in Nuroton with the new buildings there. We'll see it in Nuroton Heights, we'll see it downtown, so it's...
You mean both commercial and residential?
Right. Those are the two new buildings across from Papa Joe's. Eight, there's eight apartments there, just tucked in. It kind of fits in the neighborhood, and it's been very successful, so we'll see a lot more of that. Question five talks about different housing types, and we've covered that, affordable housing, market-rate housing. We have the cottage, we're fortunate to have that. David Genovese, as part of his project, is going to build more special-needs housing in Darien. So what we've done is, again, we're fortunate to have public water and sewer, which gives us the ability to increase density in certain locations. Question six talks about the, relative to the Housing Data Profile, deed-restricted affordable units. You're all familiar with the fact that Darien is one of the few communities in the state, I think one of only two or three, to receive two moratoria, one in October 2010, one in October 2016, each four years in length, because of the fact that we were able to have a certain number of units constructed, issued certificates of occupancy, and so you could see on page six of the write-up that since 2002, we had one of the largest increases in the amount of affordable housing in the West Cock region. So we're going to see even more built over the next two or three years, and it wouldn't surprise we continue to move up the list as we keep adding deed-restricted affordable units at both the 80% of area median, 60% level, so it's different levels of affordable housing. So the affordable housing units, which have been constructed, have been, again, water, sewer, close to town, on a bus line, walkable to certain amenities, some have been downtown, some have been across from Trader Joe's, so it worked out very well. There's been a number of sites that have been redeveloped, and the redevelopments included affordable housing. The last question talks about rental, rental costs. We all know, it's no surprise, Darien's housing has held values, it's expensive, there's a high demand for the housing, similarly rental units as well is, Craig and I were talking before the meeting about the fact that there's high demand for both rental housing and owner-occupied housing in town, and hopefully that will continue. I think what we're seeing in the Planning and Zoning Office is strong demand, there's still strong demand. One thing that differentiates us from many communities, which is, we haven't talked about it a lot, is there's no more land. The land, Darien's, it's not fully developed, but it's pretty darn close, whereas you might drive down a street in another community, see open pastures and vacant land. There's not a lot of parcels like that in Darien. So from that, we're a much different dynamic, so it's a very interesting document, but it doesn't cover things like that. There's many aspects that are not in here, so that's one thing to keep in mind as we continue to grow, is the lack of developable land, really, everything is redevelopment. You're developing a property that already has something on it, which means likely it's going to be more expensive. That's part of the, part of the whole dynamic we have here. And so I give you lots of good news. Darien is thriving, we're growing, the tax base is growing, the grand list is growing. We're still seeing a lot of development activity in our office, and we have three major projects about to get started, so. It was a very interesting exercise for me, because I was able to look at some of this data, look at some other data that we're aware of here locally, and pull it all together to give everyone a little background on what's going on. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about either the data or the write-up that we've put forth.
That's an excellent report. I strongly recommend that we all share it with our respective boards and constituencies in the RTM, because in my memory, we haven't really had that kind of a comprehensive report on bringing it all together. So thank you very much for working to put that together, and I'll open it up to board questions.
With regard to the report, this report, which talks about school-age population dropping by up to, I'm reading from the Malone and McBroom Enrollment Analysis and Projections of November 2000. Now, I'm building a school, and I have to submit this to the state, and relying on this being the number, or being in the range. And the Malone-McBroom report, 10 years out, I would say calls for a modest increase in elementary, well, not so modest, increase in elementary school enrollment. This is the high-growth model, even the, even the median model shows growth.
Right. I spent a lot of time looking at that document, because when the state put this together, again, they did, they put together 169 of these, plus one for each county, so there was someone who didn't have the information that we had, which is that Malone and McBroom report, which gave low, medium, high ranges, if you will, which was, gives this flavor for what could happen, and it's, I would take that document, and when I read it and looked at this, that document, in my opinion, way more accurate than this document.
Okay, well, that's good to know, because we're sizing a school for that.
Right.
And the taxpayers would like to know that they're doing the right thing. The, I gather the point is that many of these developments that are occurring, which are providing more housing stock in the condominium, the apartment, will probably boost our school enrollments. And I believe Malone and McBroom actually tried to take that into account in the November write-up.
Yes. What, when I spoke to Rebecca Auger a few years ago about that, I said, can you, one of the things we talk about is multipliers. Take an Avalon or a Kenset, how many children per unit would you expect from every new unit that gets constructed?
Right.
And Rebecca's response was very interesting, because I said, it would really help the town to have that. She said, you know what, there's not a, a big enough sample size for us to give you a flat number. We can estimate, and in fact, what we've seen is, for the, I'll call it the market-rate condominiums in town, Village of Pond, Sedgwick Village, Darien Close, there's four or five of them, very, very few schoolchildren, very few, one per every 10 units or something like that, not a lot of children. Avalon, we do, the Board of Ed has very accurate numbers, because it's such a standalone project, that it's 189 units. I, I would be guessing, let's call it 40 plus or minus. Kenset, not quite as many as Avalon per unit. I don't think the Board of Ed will have those numbers, and as we see the, what we've seen, and I believe we'll continue to see, is in these apartments above commercial uses, probably not a lot, while they're very desirous to live, and certainly there will be some children that move into these units. Most of them are two-bedroom. There are other choices that people might make, instead of living over a shopping center apartment lot. There will be some children, but not to the level of, say, at least in my opinion, of an Avalon, which has green grass, swimming pool, recreational space...
And no commercial.
Right, no commercial, whatever.
Right.
So we, we will know better in two or three years. There will be some children, but not to a great level. But we're still seeing turnover in the single-family residential, where folks who've had their children, as Craig and I were discussing, either they find somewhere else to live in Darien, their kids are in school or out of school, out of the elementary schools. The other factor which we discussed, which affects enrollment, doesn't affect the data we're talking about, is the whole dynamic with private schools, and how many people send their children to private school. Certainly, the local economy has an effect, the quality of the Darien schools has an effect, so the schools build that in, there's a number they build in every year, and that, of course, changes. So there are a lot of factors at work, but when I was reading the Malone and McBroom report, I, I felt much more comfortable with those numbers than these numbers.
That's good to hear.
I found it very interesting that almost 70% of our housing stock is at least 50 years old, which would suggest that our housing stock is kind of ripe for renovation and redevelopment, you know, for families coming in. It's an advantageous time for people to be buying homes in, in and around our community. So I think that's just an interesting statistic, didn't realize it was that old.
There, there were a number of things in here that you think, well, real eye-openers, you're like, wow, I never thought of it. It's tough, because they're always comparing the data to Fairfield County in the state of Connecticut, but as we discussed, you know, it's really apples and oranges when you're comparing Darien to, say, the city of Hartford, or the city of Danbury, or Talend or Union, you know.
Right.
So we're all familiar with some of the factors, but it's interesting to see how things have changed.
Following up on what Jamie just said, in this document, talking about year-built, I'm not sure what page it is, but there was a phrase that says, shifting demographics indicate that housing built from 1970 on may not meet their needs of Connecticut's current and future residents. What do you think they're saying?
I read the same sentence, and I think what they mean is, and I'm guessing, the argument nowadays is, young people, millennials, people just starting out, people in their twenties, right out of school, early 30s, well, it would be nice to have a five-bedroom, 6,000-square-foot house.
No, it wouldn't.
But most people are saying, you know what, I, I got all the space I need in 1,000 square feet. Or, as we've talked about, is, the tax laws may not be as beneficial as they used to be to own a house. Homeownership, if you're not getting a great tax deduction, and your home is not appreciating... So it used to be in the old days, people would say, oh, you know, these folks, they can't get a down payment, they can't jump into this great housing market, and they'll never, wait a minute. The whole train of thought is, you got to get on that, you're like, no, no, no. So the mindset now is, for many reasons, you know what, nothing wrong with renting, gives me the flexibility to move, upsize or downsize as I see fit, and there's, because there's no guarantee that, we saw it in 2008, how many people were underwater because they bought in at a certain time. So what, what this sentence is, I think, is saying, in a weird kind of way, is, many people might not want large, younger people might not want large houses.
Okay.
But again, when they make that statement, there's a whole different dynamic going on in Darien than there might be in other parts of the state. So the old school of thought, a single-family home is the only way to go, I don't know if that will be the way of the future.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, I have more. I was, as I was reading this, I was trying to figure out what else we can, I mean, there's so much great information, so yes, sharing with other boards and even the RTM, but how else we can use this information? Because it's just, you could read it a handful of times and get a different piece each time, so I haven't, I haven't gotten there yet, it's what else we can do with it, but there has to be other things, because it's, it's great information. One thing about that line you were just talking about, I was almost wondering, two things, if it's more that, from what I'm hearing, is when people do move out of the city, they want new. They, they don't want even a kitchen that's 10 years old, they want brand-new, and the other thing is, they, I think they want more bathrooms than a lot of houses have. You know, I mean, that you have three bedrooms, you want three bathrooms, it's just...
There are, there is, expectations have changed in the past 50, 30, 40, 50 years. Central air is a must, you only use it 20 days a year. Yes, now central, so we see it all the time. The first thing, any house that goes on the market, the first question our office gets, where can I put a pool? So not every property can accommodate a pool, for whatever reason, but yes, that is the most common question we see in our office on houses on the market, where can I put a pool?
So the other thing that makes me think is, if we are renovating more than the zoning laws, ZBA, could be, I mean, you know, you're taking a, a small house and trying to put a much bigger house on a lot of these lots, so it'll be interesting to see how that works.
It is, that, but the, the demand is so great that people are still buying up houses, there's still some spec homes being built, not as many as in the heyday, but we still see some spec homes, and certainly there's a number of houses on the market, but there's still a lot of turnover, but expectations have changed. What, as you said, Susan, that was a great example of, you know, kitchen, so we see, and sometimes, we do see a lot of kitchen permits now.
Kitchen permits.
Kitchen permits.
So, you have proof that you've upgraded. So, people look at, oh, yeah, here's the permit for, here's all the money we put into the kitchen. So, that certainly helps the grand list, and it helps people sell their house, put it in the bravery kitchen, but that's one of the selling points these days. So, the census data is going to be, census comes out and gets, everyone gets counted in March, April next year. Jamie and I have already met with a representative of the Census Bureau. So, that's seven months, and then we get the data, early data, maybe this time next year, and we might see more information. Certainly, the school enrollment numbers coming out in two months will also be helpful to all of us in understanding some of the needs of the community as well.
I would love to see us carefully track, and it's great you have all of this data here, on projections. Projections made by Partnership for Strong Communities, there's projections that the state of Connecticut has on regional and statewide. We've got our own local, you know, Malone McBroom. Looking at that against our community five years from now, looking back on those projections after the redevelopment activities, because I think, I'm not sure that we are, can fully grasp yet, the beneficial impact to this community for those redevelopments, and the desirability, not just for the housing units that are in those developments, but for housing in general. I think Darien is one of few communities where there's a real buzz about what's happening here. People are pretty excited about, you know, taking a look when they're looking to make a move into Connecticut or from elsewhere.
I have a feeling in, it's right now, it's August 2019, in about two years from today, when those projects are almost complete, there's going to be quite a buzz going on. I have a feeling we're going to be fielding a lot of questions, and people come in to look at Darien and talk about it, because this is not going on in every community. This is really something that we're benefiting from, and it's going to be great. Looking forward to it, that a lot of new commercial tenants, a lot of buzz about the community. I think it's going to be a huge win for all of us.
I think so, too. Any other questions, Kip?
Well, since you're here.
[laughing]
On page five, second to last paragraph, end sentences, "From 2008 through 2016, 150 towns experienced negative growth in real property values. Two had no growth and seven had only slight growth of 2% or less." Yeah. We're talking about the grand list here, really. And that, since Connecticut is so reliant on property tax, we're talking about a real strain on many, many, many towns. It sounds to me, if you're right, with the growth of the grand list based through these developments, that we're going to be countering that trend significantly.
It is. When you, that is a real eye-opener. 169 communities, 150 of that experienced negative growth. It's a weird way to phrase it, negative growth in real property values. In other words, that grand list is not going anywhere.
Unless they're building more things.
Right.
It's going down.
Yeah.
Devaluation.
Devaluation.
You should say that.
Yeah, it's a better word to use, because it's, so when you say, 159, so, Darien might be, if we're not the leader, we're pretty close to the top in terms of how we're doing from a grand list standpoint. And we don't have a very large commercial base, we have some.
Right.
That will certainly be growing. What we're finding, what we will see, of course, which we've talked about for a while, is, as I mentioned at the start, is, this October, a number of commercial buildings will start coming down.
Right.
And that will continue into early next year.
So, it'll be off the...
So, Mr. Homicki, there will be, there'll be a line in his office.
I want a rebate.
Yeah, I want, I want the number coming down.
Right.
And then, within, you know, probably a year later, they'll go back up. So, there'll be a little time where things are going to drop down, and then they'll come back up, and then they'll go beyond.
And that's important for, sorry.
I don't want to be Debbie Downer, but that statistic works only because they're going back to 2008, when they're talking about the grand list growth.
It's a skewed statistic, no doubt.
Right. If you went back to just our two most recent grand lists, we saw decreases in values.
Yeah, I understood.
Yeah, so...
No, I got it, but I just wanted, it looks as though we're going to be, after a little dip here with the teardowns, we're going to be...
We will have a dip with the teardowns, yes.
Yeah.
But that was, when I read that data, you're saying, why did they choose that random year, from 2008 to 2016? Well, we know what happened in 2008.
Right.
Yep.
So, had they chose 2009, or 2007, it would have been a totally different number.
Right.
Yep.
So, it's just to...
It's a data point.
It's choosing your data to make a point.
Correct.
Yes, absolutely. And we see a lot of that in here, which is, we get it, we get it. So, but it is, it was interesting to see what's going on in the rest of the state. We're on a different track, doing our own things. I think we've been very successful in diversifying the types of housing, doing it in a slow, methodical way, and a lot of communities look to us and say, have you done it? What are you doing? And sign that you're doing something right?
Any other questions?
Excellent report. Thank you. Thank you very much, Craig.
What do we get with the points?
What's that?
What do we get for having points?
Having yourself on the job.
I mean, I'm looking for rewards here, not just smiles.
Yes, we are going to, our hope is that we will be certified A-Bonds-level sustainable community.
What does that mean?
Means we scored over 200 points on 55 different action.
We get no money, we get no grants.
Oh, no. So, there are, there are grant programs and resource programs that Sustainable CT runs, and by participating in Sustainable CT, you become eligible for some of these things. But it's nothing significant.
Is it going to help Kip? I will respectfully disagree. I think that...
In terms of money?
I think that people now, especially people in Darien, young families coming here, care very deeply for sustainability and sustainable ideas. And we've seen that, we've invested in that significantly in this town, and to be able to evidence the hard work that the town has done with some kind of a certification, I think, is very much of a plus when people are considering their options on where to move.
I agree wholeheartedly. And I'll also point out that the lion's share of sustainable initiatives that we have enacted in the last five to 10 years have resulted in saving money.
Correct. Yeah. Great. Thank you so much.
I'm excited to hear that. Someone's going to be a curmudgeon and ask the question.
[laughing] Okay. Moving on to new business, discuss and take action to recommend changes to the false alarm ordinance.
All right. So, in your package, if you go to the second page, you had asked a number of questions at the last meeting regarding the ordinance, which I followed up with the Fire Marshal and Town Council. I think the most important one was the very first one, is there a limit on the amount of fine? And yes, the limit is 250. We don't currently give out a warning. If you have a, an offense, you get fined, right from the start. We cannot leverage the payment of the fines against other services that we offer, so we can't deny somebody a beach permit if they haven't paid their false alarm fines. We're just allowed to fine according to the state statutes. Our collection rate is actually pretty good when you go out, you know, a few years beyond, because the Fire Marshal's office does continue to try and collect it. So, based on the information I found, I think if you want to try and increase in scale, to try and get at some of the repeat offenders, my recommendation is, keep the first one where it is, make the second one a slight increase of 150, but hit them hard with the third, and any, anyone's beyond the third alarm. And I would say, my recommendation is a year, within a year.
A 365-day period?
Yes.
Right. That's a floating period.
Yes.
Got it. I agree. So, the language should be a little bit different, that's all.
Yeah, I agree. I was just going to say, the third should be third false alarm, and something like, and any additional alarms, or...
Third or more.
Third or more, yeah.
And also up here, the repeated offenses within one year, as Kip said, I think you should say offenses within a 365-day, so that way, is a year.
Or a one-year running period. A period starts with the first alarm.
Okay.
The yearly...
Within one year, the first, do you think it's understood the way it's written, or needs to, you know?
I just don't want people thinking, well, I had an alarm on December 31st.
Yeah, they don't get any calendar on January 1st.
Exactly. You got it. That's fine.
Or, yeah.
It's pretty easy. You can get the language right.
I fully support this. This is something that the volunteer fire departments were eager for us to take up, to help try and assist in reducing the number of false alarms. I think it's the least that we can do. Wish that we weren't constrained by state statute, but we are.
Yeah. Can you just walk us through how it goes to the RTM?
If you approve it, then I will send, I will send a memo to the moderator.
Okay.
And to Wayne. TG SNA will take it up.
Okay.
They'll probably clean up the language to whatever, you know, legally Wayne says to make sure the 365-day period is understood, and things like that.
Okay.
And then they take it up. You know, I'll send it out right away. If you approve it tonight, I'll send it out to Seth right away in hopes of getting, I don't think they'll take it up for September, because it's going to have to go through TG SNA, but, I don't know.
Well, rules can assign it, at least.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay. Any other questions about this?
So, move.
Great. So, Kip moves. May I have a second? Susan seconds. All those in favor? Thank you. All right. Discuss and take action to approve the Board of Selectmen goals and objectives. I did my best to give you track changes on these, based on our discussion last time. So, I'll entertain discussion on our goals and objectives. Susan, Kip, Mark.
I spent some time on this, and I think they're just fine.
I like to hear that.
No, seriously, a lot of, some thought has gone, considerable thought has gone into them, and they're updated. And I find them quite comprehensive. Now, I may be embarrassed in a few moments when I hear other people's comments, but...
That's what the process is for.
I'm good.
Great. I just had a few suggestions. So, under, one, two, three, under the fourth bullet, the first one we have is prioritize and support cybersecurity measures. I don't know if that maybe should go up to the top, because in some ways, it's public safety versus maintain and enhance. It doesn't sound like town infrastructure to me, but, you know, I don't, I didn't, I thought it would be worth a discussion on that.
When you say cybersecurity measures, are you talking about for the town operations, or are you talking for the town in general?
Town operating.
Oh, well, then I guess...
Board of Ed.
Yeah.
So, then it is...
Town of Darien.
I would, I would suggest you might want to leave it where it is.
There's little impact, for example, that the town can have on enhancing the cybersecurity of businesses in the town of Darien, banks, and in other institutions. So, the intent of this was to protect our own government data.
Right. Then it can stay where it is.
Okay.
The other thing is, we have, under the second bullet, down, we have support housing choice for all demographic constituents. And then under the next bullet, we talk about affordable housing. I don't know if we need it in both spots. I mean, one has to do with, I guess, more with zoning versus just to make them available. I don't know if it should all be in one, or is it okay to have them in the two different spots? I overall, I agree with Mark, the overall, I mean, these are just little things here. I think they're very good overall.
Okay. Does anybody have suggestions on that? Mark and Kip?
Are you guys okay with having it to?
You know, they could mean two different things. Housing choice can mean a range of things from the 3,000-square-foot home or bigger to the condominiums, but not address affordability?
Yeah. I mean, one has to do with more of the living, and the other has to do with the zoning, I think, but I just, it just hit me that we were talking, maybe they, and they do say different things, but I just thought it would be worth bringing up.
The way I read it is that the first bullet is saying that, look, we're not going to sit up here as maybe we did many years ago, and we're not going to have apartments in this town.
Right.
Okay. We're saying, hey, look, open the choices up, just as Jeremy was talking about, condominiums, smaller apartments, larger apartments, whatever. That's providing housing choice. The other part is zoning regulations, which implement all of these changes. It's both housing and commercial, so I see a distinction.
Okay. I also see a distinction, and am okay leaving it in both.
Again, in my last comment, I totally understand, certainly for the public, that the Board of Selectmen has nothing to do with the Board of Education, as far as, you know, they, they're their own silo. I hope that one day...
We would not like it to be that way.
I was going to say, I hope one day the silos can merge a little bit more, but that's for another night. But nowhere on here do we have the word education, or public education. So, I, it may not be appropriate to put it here, but if there is anywhere that anyone could, it's certainly, it's just supporting it. It's not at all telling them what they should or shouldn't do, but, you know, it does have to do with a budget that then goes to the RTM. So, as the Board of Selectmen, I think somewhere on here, we should say something about supporting the public education, or supporting a school system, something along those lines, but I don't want to certainly step on any toes.
You could do something in the second.
I would say, yeah, under quality of living.
Quality of living is where it should go.
Yeah.
And if you guys disagree, then...
I think that's a very good idea.
How about just support quality education?
We...
That's good, because it could also mean seniors as well as schoolchildren, I mean, education.
Well, I'm responsible for the schools, but we both live in the same town, both Board of Ed and Board of Selectmen, and we do, we do support each other.
I'm doing it at school.
Yeah. I agree with that, because I think education comes in so many different forms. Part of it is supported through the Darien Public Schools. We support educational programs through our nonprofits. We support educational programs through the depot. You know, there's, I think, making a general comment about supporting...
Through the seniors center, through the youth commission, yes.
Well, even the sustainability committee. I mean, they, a lot of what they do is educate the public. So...
So, what's the desired wording? Quality education? Or is that support?
I think you maybe want a little bit more to make it clear that you're talking about the full range of our population.
Yeah.
Yes.
Support. I didn't come up with the wording, that was the problem.
Something about support quality education for Darien system citizens through...
All, or all Darien.
All phases of life.
Or all Darien citizens.
There you go. Something like that.
Okay. I'll wordsmith on that, and send out a, I think, I think we are agreeing that that's really our only change, unless someone has additional comments. Okay. And if something pops into your head, send me an email. Okay. Then I would anticipate that at our next meeting, we should be ready to vote on this. We won't vote on this tonight. Okay? All right. Moving on to transfers.
First one is the Health Department. So, we used to receive a grant that covered the cost of some part-time salary. And during the year, the Finance Director, the Health Director and I had a discussion about the level of work we had to put into the grant to receive a small amount of money that we did receive. We decided not to continue pursuing the grant, so we do have to make up a $1,200 shortfall in the part-time salary account in the Health Department budget.
How did a grant of $5,100... How did a grant of $5,141 that went away only lead to...
There were other things we just didn't do.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
A new accounting process.
Okay, yes, so to be clear, we are, we are passing on the opportunity to receive a state block grant in totaling $5,141 and making that up in a combination of a contingency transfer this year and service modifications, and then we will budget appropriately in the next budget cycle. Any further discussion about this transfer? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve a $1,200 transfer from contingency to part-time salary.
So moved.
Mark, second?
Second.
Kip, all those in favor? Great, thank you. Okay, Norotin Fire Department.
This is one of those residuals from our, switching from giving them a large grant to our paying for expenses directly, which means our budgeting. So we are still refining their budget numbers. Every year, we get a little bit more on target with what to expect in these various line items. But it is all within the total amount that we had given them. Just where it was budgeted that we need to address.
So we'll have to take a hard look at operating supplies and facility maintenance and repair in the upcoming budget? Okay.
And Kate, obviously, this is just one of the departments. Do you anticipate the other two coming forward?
This should be the last batch of transfers for fiscal 2019.
Great.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's what you meant by the former portion of the grant account?
Right, so this is, this is only the third year, so really, you know, this was... We're still seeing the trends in the budget. I think, give us another year or two, should be dead on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, good.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve a $6,438 transfer from the operating supplies account and motor fuel and lubricants to facilities, maintenance, repair. Susan moves? You have a second?
Second.
Kip, seconds. All those in favor? Great, thank you. Okay, hydrants and water mains.
Yeah. When we budget this, we always do our best to estimate it, and we frequently have increases in additional charges that we're in this with during the year, so.
It's a timing issue, really, based on the billing.
This is off the past fiscal year, right?
Yes, this is all past fiscal year.
Yeah, okay.
Mark?
Yes, Kate, could you, could you tell us just, in round numbers roughly, what's in the budget for hydrant charges?
Oh, it's pretty significant.
Oh, several hundred thousand dollars.
It could be upwards of $400,000.
It's a big number.
Yeah, so on a percentage basis, this would be...
This is a grain of sand.
It's immaterial, is our word for it.
Correct.
But it's something that is, it's not unusual to cross the...
I'll catch you all to sand grains, one away.
There's no way for us to impact the cost, the hydrant cost either. It's just a plug from the bill from the water company.
We could remove some hydrants. That's not a good idea.
Yeah, I don't, wouldn't do that.
We're trying to work with the fire departments.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to transfer $6,162 from contingency to hydrant charges.
So moved.
Mark, you have a second?
Second.
Kip, all those in favor? Great, thank you. And public works.
Credit card charges.
Gosh, killer. This is killer.
I believe the Board of Finance is back, it's coming back up again, you know, they're going to be discussing the whole overall policy on whether or not to pass the fees along. This is not an area in which we currently pass credit card, the fees that we incur. We do not currently pass them along to the people who use the service.
Kate, can you remind us who we do, when we do pass those on?
Parking permits.
Okay.
The waitlist, the tax collector.
But how can you pass it along here?
This is...
Because it's a daily thing, or a weekly thing.
This one is, would be pretty hard to do as a, basically, you know, all we can do is really increase the fee and, you know, to cut our, to come out with the same amount of net revenue, you know, get to the net revenue we want. But you're right, on the pay stations, you really can't.
And this is the total charge for the pay stations?
This is the overage.
The overage.
We have a budget for it.
Okay.
This is the overrun.
I guess we should look back and see what that number really is.
So I just wanna make sure that I'm clear. Is it not possible to increase the parking fee? Pay station parking fee to cover the charge?
Sure. We could do that, but we can't actually put a service charge on, because this is the people who go and pay the $4 a day
Yep.
at the machine, so it's not, we're not gonna be able to put $4 on, and oh, by the way, 50 cents for processing.
Okay.
So we could increase, if you so desire.
But you'll never catch up.
I was gonna say, but if you increase it to 450, then don't you get charged?
Yes.
The processing fees on 450 versus $4.
You'd almost have to, you know, work backwards and say, you know, what do you wanna net?
Right.
What do you wanna net per use?
But you're always gonna have that charge.
Yes.
Yep. It's frustrating, though, for those who are here and listening at home. It's, you know, taxpayer dollars subsidizing the usage of the credit card system for selected services. And, you know, we as a board struggle with that concept. We don't believe that the general taxpayer base should be subsidizing individuals' credit card use.
The only way to get around it with this, I think, would be to, like, eliminate the pay stations or eliminate credit cards at the pay stations and only take credit cards through the app. And then you could, we should be able to put something onto the app that, you know, hits more of the fee, but...
Can you, at next meeting, can you let us know what the total charge is? I mean, we can go ahead with this, but...
How much do we pay total?
Yeah, because also, as I'm sitting here thinking about it, yes, the Darien taxpayer is subsidizing this, and we don't even know, we're subsidizing residents as well as non-residents.
Oh, absolutely, well, yes.
There's a lot of people that pay...
They're paying a fee. They're paying a user's fee. They're paying a convenience user's fee. I don't, I don't really follow the logic that we're subsidizing.
They're not paying the fee at this, that's what we're saying.
No, they're paying a fee to park, is what I think what you mean.
That's all.
Yeah, they're paying a fee to park, and so part of that goes to the execution, the movement of funds, I mean...
And convenience is wonderful.
Right. So I guess, I guess, for us to have the conversation that we have been counting on our, we've been looking at our parking revenues based on a $4 fee, and maybe we need to revise our parking revenues to consider that, or, or...
It's a 3...
$3 in some sense is really what we're netting revenue, if you consider the charges.
Let's just be curious about the big number, the other number. So that's...
I mean, you pay, when people park and they pay your fee, I have to pay Connecticut sales and use tax, 6.35%.
We don't?
No, I know, but I do. So, I mean, do I...
Do you build it into your charge?
No, I just say that, I mean, I charge what I can charge.
Right.
And the government gets their clammy hands on 6.35%. That's all it is. I mean, I don't, I don't understand the logic of this. You can budget whatever you want, but it's make-believe. If you're charging $4, you're gonna get $3.85.
The more important question is, are we charging the appropriate amount?
There you go. That's the answer. That's the only thing that matters, in my opinion.
Okay, we can add that to our parking meeting discussion. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve a transfer of $6,741 from snow removal to professional service.
So moved.
Guess it's a good thing it didn't snow a lot. That's winter.
May I have a second?
Sure.
Mark, all those in favor? Great, okay, thank you. All right. We have only one appointment this evening. We'll have to reschedule the interview for Amy Doring, but I will entertain a motion to reappoint Susan Daley to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term expiring on March 31st, 2022.
So moved.
Susan?
Second.
Kip, all those in favor? Great, thank you. Susan's doing a great job on the Parks Commission. We have regular meeting minutes of our August 5th meeting.
I had no changes.
No kidding?
No kidding.
Anybody else have corrections or additions? Nope. No? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Kip, you have a second?
Second.
Mark, all those in favor? Great, thank you. And then we have special meeting minutes from our August 5th meeting.
Moved.
So moved. Susan?
Second.
Kip, seconds. All those in favor? Very much. Okay, agenda review.
We're having a parking meeting?
I guess so.
Yep. Linda, if Linda hasn't done it already, she'll be sending to you another community value statement that I found online.
Oh, okay.
And once we nail down our goals and objectives, then we move into that discussion.
Oh, I see, okay. I wasn't quite sure where that, where that fit.
Also, I was looking, Madison, Connecticut, has quite on their town website, they've, they're doing, they've done a strategic plan with the Board of Finance, Board of Education, and the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, that's cool.
Tenure strategic plan. I just found it a little while ago, so I haven't looked deeply into it, but might be worth taking a look at, Madison, Connecticut.
I will talk to Tom Banish about it next time I see him.
Are you from Madison? Yeah, it's quite a, quite exciting to see those three boards together.
Okay. You can always email if there's something that comes to mind. So hearing nothing, then I will entertain a motion...
An agenda review?
Yes.
Ever since I heard that a number of commuters were parking in the grocery store parking lots, I've been worried where those people are gonna park when they put the construction fence up, which is now coming sooner.
Right.
Coming soon. And I'd like to discuss that a little bit more. We need, we need some ideas.
Do you feel a responsibility to find them a place? Or are you concerned about enforcing regulations preventing them from parking on street and...
Both, both. I really feel it's an obligation as a parking authority to help our commuting citizens find a way to get to work.
We can definitely talk about that. Perhaps there's a role for the company Boxcar to engage with the landowners from the developments.
Yeah.
So we can, we can have a discussion about that.
Actually, I think that's, that's a good possibility. I'm thinking of underutilized parking lots during the week can be turned into revenue sources.
And that's already happening in Darien. Boxcar is engaged with, I'm not sure how many property owners, but they are here. They're very successful up in New Canaan, and that's a relationship that's between the property owner and Boxcar and the person that wants to park. The town has no involvement in that. But we could have this discussion. I'd like to follow up with Jeremy, because I remember that they likely talked about it when they were talking about their zoning approvals and displacing. I know those studies were done. The studies were also done in relation to the Norotin Heights access study.
Correct. That's what the data that I was showing me that, I think we're gonna have this problem.
Yep. Okay. Anything else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So Susan, second?
Second.
Mark, all those in favor? Thank you.